Good evening, Council. Good evening, everybody. It is the City of Sammamish City Council Regular Meeting, 6:30 PM, Tuesday, June 1, 2021. And it is called order. Lita.
Mayor Karen Moran.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Kristi Malchow. Councilmember Ken Gamblin.
Present.
Councilmember Tom Odell.
Present.
Councilmember Chris Ross.
Present.
Councilmember Pamela Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Kent Trine.
Present.
Meeting Accessibility. Pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Proclamation 20-25, the city is unable to provide an in-person location for the public to listen to the virtual City Council meeting this evening. Meetings are still accessible to the public and public comment is able to be submitted. To view live, city website www.sammamish.us/tv21, city YouTube, and on Comcast TV21 within Sammamish only. To view later, meeting videos are available the day after the meeting on the city website www.sammamish.us/tv21, on YouTube, and again on Comcast Channel 21 within Sammamish only. Pledge of Allegiance. Well, how about Councilmember Odell? Would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember. First up is the approval of the agenda this evening. Who was that? Deputy Mayor? Who said Deputy Mayor? Who said something?
Yes.
That was?
Yes.
Okay. We have a first by Deputy Mayor.
I'll second it.
And we have a second. Do we have any comments or revisions this evening? We have a revision this evening, and that brings us to our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. The Public Hearing for Transportation Improvement Plan, the TIP, posted and noticed for tonight, June 1, 2021, will not occur this evening. Rescheduling plans are not known now. Notice will be provided when and if that occurs. If you have made arrangements and intended to speak to this matter, I apologize for this disappointment. Staff has worked extremely diligently on a possible tip. However, along with much closer examination of the identified projects and projects that may be identified as possible additions, our legal counselors have identified potential legal issues at this point in time that prompt this deferral. Therefore, with sound legal advice and the concurrence of the mayor, I am pulling from the agenda of June 1, 2021, the public hearing of the 2021 to 2027 Transportation Improvement Plan. My apologies to the mayor and council and the public in our community that we're looking forward to speaking on this item and/or following the matter closely. There has been much staff work and analysis that has been dedicated to this project, but at this time, but that time and effort will not have been wasted as it is analysis and review that benefits us going forward and will help guide us in other decisions that will be required in the near future. Thank you for your understanding and patience on this matter.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Any other comments? Okay, seeing or hearing none. All those in favor of the agenda as revised? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, I think I heard one nay. That is correct. I believe we have a 6-1. Okay. Next up, we have got Emergency Management. And Andrew.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, City Manager. Beautiful day outside today. My name is Andrew Stevens, Mercy Manager for Eastside Fire and Rescue, here to give a brief update on COVID-19 and, most importantly, the vaccination efforts that our residents in Sammamish and the greater east side have been undertaking for the last couple of months. As of today, the total number of COVID-19 cases for Sammamish is sitting right at 1,400 cases, and that is one new case since yesterday. Now, I did want to talk on the King County vaccination rates real briefly, which are pretty spectacular at this moment. Across King County, residents who have had at least one dose of a COVID-19 vaccine is sitting at 74.3%. And those who have completed their vaccination series is sitting at 62.5%. Our vaccination efforts down at Lake Sammamish State Park have been running now for seven consecutive weeks with just Sundays off. And right now, we've already delivered over 13,650 doses as of today, and we have another 1,631 doses booked for the remainder of this week and with the June 12 being our last day of operations. And of those numbers, we've seen about 56.6% of those populations are white, meaning that the remaining 44% are coming from black indigenous persons of color populations. Sammamish, and I think this is a testament to, I think, the drive that this council and the leadership from Sammamish and Nisqomia have had to stand up this vaccination site. Right now, the two ZIP codes within Sammamish, 98074 and 98075, have the highest rate of vaccinations of any other ZIP code across King County for those residents who have started at least one dose. 98074 is sitting at 93.6%, and this is all populations age 12 and up. So anyone who is eligible to receive a vaccine, almost 94% of northern Sammamish has gotten or started that series. And the lower 98075 is sitting at 92.8%. Both of those populations who have completed that series is roughly around 75% fully vaccinated across our community. Again, those first two numbers are the highest ZIP code populations in any of all of King County. So spectacular job, Sammamish residents. As I mentioned, we are ramping down. We are finishing out our second dose boosters both this week and next, working on our demobilization plan and storage of all the equipment and PPE and vaccination supplies, and slowly and surely going through the vaccine supplies provided by the Snoqualmie Tribal Nation. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions. I know it's been a wonderful, you know, couple of weeks of weather. We were out there all day yesterday watching the people in the park enjoying it while we were working, but happy to answer any questions.
Okay, that's a bummer. Okay, Council, do we have any questions for Andrew? Okay, from the chat box, Councilmember Odell, followed by Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Andrew. Two things, and maybe this is more directed to the city manager. What percentage of our city staff have been vaccinated at this point? Do we know that?
Councilman Odell, councilmembers, I don't know that yet. We're surveying and having, going to have the employees fill out the vaccination forms. That's why we're all still wearing masks until I can look at that policy change.
The reason I ask, Dave, is I saw an email from Redmond, their electronic newsletter. Today announced they will be reopening on July 1.
Who's going to reopen?
The city of Redmond.
Oh, the city of Redmond, okay.
I just wondered if...
I don't think we're ready there. We have a committee, internal committee, of our directors and staff headed up by the new deputy city manager, who are looking at all of the logistics and all of the nuances of reopening, but we won't be ready in July.
All right. Okay, thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
Great, thank you, Andrew. Great report as far as the numbers of people here in Sammamish that have received the vaccine. That's such great, that's very encouraging. I do have a question, because I feel like in the community, there seems to be some ambiguity relative to the mask mandate as it pertains particularly to King County. Can you give us, as well as our general public, you know, kind of the lowdown? Because I think we all just got an email from SCA, and it doesn't sound like the mandate for King County is still in effect, so there are some, an option to not wear masks. Can you just kind of clarify where things are relative to wearing a mask, especially if you're vaccinated versus not wearing a mask?
Yeah, I believe that King County has adopted the state, the governor's approach when it comes to mask mandates, whereas it is not a requirement for fully vaccinated individuals. However, employers and businesses can most definitely still require people to wear masks within or on their property or for their employees. You know, following that mask mandate that did come out, Dr. Duchin did come out in a statement saying, you know, it may have been a little premature. He does urge people to still use cautions, and especially if you do, there are populations, basically anyone under 12, who is not able to receive a vaccine. I think the one benefit of having a mask is that it has proven very successful. Now, if you are vaccinated, there's so many things you can do now. You can get together in groups. You can get together with other vaccinated people unmasked and not socially distanced, you know, have these small gatherings, but while in public and not knowing who's fully vaccinated and who's not, while there is maybe no mandate, I think a lot of people are making the personal choice to just continue that and then, of course, abide by any of the facilities that they're in.
Okay, great. And then follow on, if I can really pick for our city manager. Councilmember Odell kind of alluded to, you know, Redmond reopening, and I heard you say that we are not ready to open, but what about as it pertains to the governor's orders relative to OPMA and the requirement that council be backed? Do we have, have we figured out, is council required to be back in council chambers after June 30th, or we haven't figured that out yet?
Deputy members of the council, in response to that, as far as I know right now, hybrid council meetings where council can be present, can be at home, there is no requirement. And what we're hearing from WCA and others is that the governor is moving slowly on that front. So I anticipate, the way I'm operating right now, is that we'll be hybrid at least through August. I mean, August, we're dark, and possibly reopening City Hall perhaps by September 1. There's a lot of logistical issues, a lot of concern for our employees, and we're trying to figure out how the best to handle appointments and go get the job done, and because we have been so effective, it doesn't demand that we open right away as far as we can see in the feedback that we've gotten. So I hope that answer was helpful.
Yeah, that makes sense. I think just for the general public, then, will we continue to provide the option for them to call in as they have during the pandemic for public comment?
That's correct. And we are looking at, logistically, how do we handle that? What if, you know, as SCA, there was some rumors coming out of the governor's office just two weeks ago, that what if he changed OPMA and we weren't otherwise ready? What would we do? And since we've heard that they've backed away from that, but we're still working on those options about how we might open part of the lobby, how we might have other cameras or other televisions, and how we would accommodate at least some people here at City Hall. So that's part of our planning effort.
Great, Steve, I appreciate that update.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. City Manager, happy to hear you guys are working on those plans, anxious to see those. I really hope that as we move forward beyond the pandemic and for, you know, the foreseeable future, that we take hybrid into account, you know, not only for employees but for the public as well. I think we are far more accessible to the public when we allow them both, you know, an in-person and a phone-in option. There are many people who can't necessarily get to City Hall, and especially when we don't take public comment first thing and people have to wait, that can be really challenging for people who have, you know, jobs or kids or whatever. So I do hope we'll take that into consideration. I know a lot of businesses are looking at how to make hybrid a more permanent option. So I hope you'll take that input. I think that, you know, at the state legislature level, for example, I think there was far more public participation by allowing that, and I hope we can do the same. On a similar note, I have a question. We declared a state of emergency in Sammamish, and we did not put any ending on that. We did not tie it to anything. We did not put any sort of a date. So I would hope that we would also be talking about when we would be able to lift that state of emergency, at least in terms of, you know, kind of the broad power or, you know, expanded power that may come with that, and have that be part of our plan so that we don't just forget and leave us in that state of emergency indefinitely.
To your first question or statement, we are taking that into consideration. I think that this pandemic has changed the way the world operates. It's certainly changed the way general business and government has operated, and we're looking at how we can accommodate models even as you folks have been able to operate from home and our staff has been able to operate from home. I anticipate that we will continue to subscribe to Zoom and go to meeting and Teams and incorporate it into our daily operational lives well after the pandemic has passed. As to the state of emergency, I'll first give a quick answer and then turn it over to the emergency manager. We are very cognizant that we are still in a state of emergency, and statements from the governor or the governor's office recognizes that, and we are always followed where King County is and where the governor is. So we'll keep an eye on that and not let it lapse. Andrew.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. City Manager. My comments are very in line with that. Looking at still under a presidential federal disaster declaration right now as well, going down to the state of Washington, state of emergency as well, King County, we want to make sure that we're mirroring that. It's also, I think it's going to most definitely help with our, any sort of disaster reimbursement claims. If we end our own local emergency premature, then we'd most likely not be able to seek any reimbursement from that date forward.
Thank you.
Councilmember Ross.
So Redmond announced at the beginning of July, and then I just heard Sammamish is on course for two months later. Is Redmond an outlier? They're hardly, they're a very responsible, methodical city in decision-making, so they probably have a pretty good plan. I would like to see before August, a plan to get ourselves to some level of in-house occupation rather than virtual, or it could be a hybrid, or it could be a graduated hybrid to full employment here in City Hall, to provide the services on-site to our residents. And so I'd like to see what our plan is, not just September 1, but what does it take to get to September 1, because it feels like we're lagging behind our neighboring city. I don't know about the other cities.
I've been on the meetings most every week with the city managers group, and there are a few that are opening in July, a few more in August, and a number of them has said September or the fall, because we've not known and had clear vision on what our numbers are going to be, what's vaccination's going to really do, how quickly it could ramp up, and/or certainly the talk of the fourth wave is dropping significantly. But we are working on our plan internally, and as soon as it's more viable and in a position to share, we'll bring it to the council and begin to share it.
Okay, and then I wanted to, I just wanted to state that I was, I'm working with a couple of folks off the Redmond City Council as we're nearing, which Councilmember Ross will be joining us on for World Whiskey Day coming up here at the end of July, and all the proceeds will be going to the Women's Shelter down in Redmond. But when they're talking about opening up at the end of June, that is, their goal is to have all the, opening it up so all the staff can start coming back. It won't be opening up until the public, until after all the council comes back. So when the council comes back from their break at the end of August is when it'll be opened up to the public, and then it'll be opened up outside of their chambers, I guess. And then when I was talking to Mayor Polly, they're looking at it being, opening up, I think she said the 6th of July, it's the weekend, after the weekend of the 4th of July, and they're looking at it being, of course, just the staff coming back, whereas many are coming back in person, and they've got certain jobs that, you know, she wants back. And then again, with the opening up a couple of months later to the public. So, yeah, I think everybody's starting it, but it's going to be a little bit of a process. But, yeah, it's, and I think it's something that we all want back as quickly as possible. But I understand. And Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, I was just going to make one comment. I talked to Deion Dawson at SCA, who were just relative to pick and whether we were going to be in-person or what, and I think SCA is struggling with the same things that we are as jurisdiction isn't, their intention isn't to go back until September at the earliest as well. Thinking that everyone's off in August, so that will be the real opportunity to kind of get everyone's ducks in a row and then be back in September.
That's, that's what we've been hearing. It's gradual. Getting staff back into City Hall is also an issue that we're dealing with. We, we had two seminars over the last couple of weeks that were open to, for employees all over the state, and it was very interesting. One of the primary issues that folks are emphasizing who were leading this was employee retention. And as the pandemic has changed our use of things and allowed remote working, a lot of folks are looking at, can I work remotely at least part of the time? And so we're also looking at that. And that will have an impact on perhaps how much capital we have to reinvest into City Hall, because we are maxing out our walls. But if we can alternate some of our workforce and have people work a couple of days from home, I think they've proven to be a very effective model, and so we're incorporating all of that into our, our planning and thought processes.
This is music to my ears, Mr. City Manager, because in addition to helping people strike the appropriate work-life balance by giving them those flexible options, we also have an incredible effect on the environment. So in King County, more than a third of our greenhouse gas emissions come from transportation. And if people were to work from home three days a week, that would cut down 60% of commuter traffic. So that can have a huge positive effect on traffic. It can also have a huge positive effect on the environment. So really appreciate you looking into that and finding the right balance of our remote work with required in person.
Do we have any other questions for Andrew? Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next we have public comment. And pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Proclamation 20-25, the city is unable to provide an in-person location for the public to listen to the virtual City Council meeting this evening. Meetings are still accessible to the public and public comment is able to be submitted. Written public comment will be accepted until 5:00 PM on the day of the meeting. Submit your written comments by email to the city clerk, l.hatchey@ssammamish.us and the city council, at citycouncil@ssammamish.us. Up to three minutes of verbal public comment may be provided per person live during the meeting. Call the following number and input the access code when prompted by 6:30 PM the day of the meeting. Phone number 1-571-317-3122. The access code 929-348-197. Once you have been joined, input on mute, and then I'm going to turn it over, going to yours, turning it over to Lita.
We currently have three people who have called in to provide public comment tonight. I will unmute callers in the order that they have joined the meeting. When is your turn? You will hear an automated voice say unmuted, and then you will have three minutes to provide comment. Fifteen seconds before your three minutes is complete, I will provide a time warning, and at three minutes, you will be muted. Please start your comment by stating your name, the city you live in, for the record. I will now unmute caller number one. Caller number one.
Hi, my name is Kim Suver, and I am a Sammamish resident. I'm a volunteer with the local chapter of Moms Man Action for Guns Sense in America. I guess this is a pre-thank you, since you have not read our submitted proclamation yet, but I just want to thank the city council for your participation in the Wear Orange campaign by proclaiming June 4, 2021, to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day in the city of Sammamish. I am grateful for your support on this incredibly important issue. Myself and the local Moms Man Action Group would love any opportunity to work with the city to spread awareness and educational information to our community moving forward. I'd also like, on the behalf of Eastlake High School Students Demand Action Group, I would like to invite the community to come out this Saturday, June 5, at 11:00 AM, to show your support for Wear Orange Weekend. They will be wearing their orange and bringing awareness on the corner of Inglewood Hill Road and 228th Avenue Northeast. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. I will now unmute caller number two. Caller number two.
Good evening, Council. Paul Stickney here, and Karen Moran. It was exciting to hear that the whiskey day is coming back this year. That's exciting. I'll come down and help out. And I was sad to hear that there's not going to be a public hearing tonight. I'll hold the comments for that until later on. So I have a, a second comment that I was going to give at this opening anyway, and it's nice to hear that staff's going to go back and relook at the TIP overall in general. And I would suggest taking a look at the, at the concurrency projects that were committed in prior comp plans, in master plans, and were talked about in the TMP, even though that was not adopted, as outlined in a few emails that, that I sent in on May 11 and May 18. And today, I sent in a list that showed some of the lane capacity projects I knew of that were done in Sammamish, and that's great. And it also shows some of those that are not. But I think a couple interesting points to, to keep in mind, and I'm not a lawyer, I am just repeating what I've heard over time here, is that roughly 85% of the housing units in Sammamish were built before the city incorporated or were King County development vested housing in the pipeline at incorporation. And the other 15% of the housing units that are here that exist today in Sammamish were built under our codes. Why does this matter, or so what? Well, I've heard many times that new development is only responsible to pay for the deficiencies and impact it creates. It's not responsible for pre-existing deficiencies and road projects. And since a large, you know, portion, roughly 85% of our housing units are, are pre-existing, that could, not will, again, I'm not a lawyer, but it could put a burden and risk on existing that could, not will, again, I'm not a lawyer, but it could put a burden and risk on existing residents relative to that 85-15 relationship. So, and again, I suggest that we expand the Berkey IS to look at optimal housing and economic supplies to alleviate imbalances in the community, add assets with appropriate benefits.
Fifteen seconds.
And take the time to, to, to get all that right. So anyway, have a nice evening and farmer's market.
Thank you.
I'll now unmute caller number three.
Hello, this is Mary Victor. I've lived in Smamish for 20 years. I wanted to say ditto for everything I heard Council and staff and the city manager say with regard to public comment. I think it's super important to hear from people wherever they are, however they are, and how they feel most comfortable. And opening up the meetings and keeping at least a hybrid approach would be great. And I also think that should be honored for staff, because a lot of work can be done remotely, and it can be very effective as well. The other thing I think that would help is if public comment is put at the beginning, when I understand why COVID updates may be done first. But if you do that, plus other topics, plus agenda discussion, plus an executive session people end up holding for a really long time, and a lot of people aren't willing or can't do that, so I would like you to think about that. The other thing is, is it's very hard, if not impossible, to try to do a PowerPoint presentation while you're talking. Where I live, I get my verbal about six seconds before the PowerPoint, so I have to talk and pray that the slides come up. And I know people that have a two-minute delay, because I actually pay for extra-fast internet for my house, because I work from home. So I think just some of those technical things, if that could be worked out, that would be awesome. At least if we could put pictures up and have short slide presentations, that would be awesome. And then I just wanted to speak, I know you're not doing the, the TIP tonight for the public hearing, and I was sorry to hear that. But I just wanted to say you have Transportation 101 for Lewis Thompson Road, and I wanted to thank you for putting that as a legislative priority for the $3 million that's been given from the state for it, and that city staff reached out to some individuals to help support additional grants through King County Flood and potentially other federal resources. And I also see there's a Transportation Improvement Board grant that, I looked that up, and it sounds like it's upcoming, and we, as people, would be happy to support whatever is needed to apply for those grants, because they're super important. But one thing I wanted to say on the project scope, on page 39 of 108 of the revised packet tonight, on the project scope, it says widen for sidewalk on one side and install stormwater tight line, which I'm totally hip with, I think that's awesome. But I did want to let you know that there are a lot of people that bicycle on Lewis Thompson Road every day. There are singles, doubles, triples, and small groups of bike people that range all the way from very young to very old. They can even talk while they bike up that hill and keep their breathing going. And they use the right side shoulder, which works pretty well as long as there aren't any garbage cans or trash cans there, there isn't anybody parked there. And I think that that could work well. And then coming down Lewis Thompson from 212, they tend to ride in the lane, so it'd be a shared bike lane and a traffic lane. And then the most important thing about Lewis Thompson is it is curvy, there's not many, many, many sight distances. So I think it's really important to look at possibly decreasing the speed limit to 25 and starting that earlier than later. So that's my comment for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you to everybody that called in. Next up, I believe we have got public comment. Oh, sorry, we've got executive session. And it is, hang on, sorry, I got mixed up here. Executive session, and it is, Teresa to receive and evaluate complaints or charges brought against a public officer and employee, RCW 42 dot 30 110 IF and RCW 42 30 110 IG, it looks like. Okay. And what are we thinking? Okay, let's go for 30 minutes, I guess. Okay, so we will be back in executive session, 30 minutes, being back at 7:40. And I think, do we have an attorney for an executive session this evening? Lisa, are you with us? Should we need you?
Lisa's here.
Okay.
Mayor Moran.
Yes.
I was not invited to this executive session.
Okay, well, be on call, please. Great. Okay, welcome back. It is 10 minutes after eight. And the first thing up, we have got our consent calendar. I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent calendar.
So moved.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second on the floor. Any comments?
Mayor, I don't know if everyone's back yet. I don't see, oh, I'm sorry, I do see Christie, never mind. But I don't see Tom. Is Tom logged in? Is he there?
Still in trouble getting in, back in.
Okay.
I'm here, though.
Okay, excellent. Just wanna make sure you're here. Thanks, Tom.
Okay, so, motion and a second on the floor for the acceptance of the consent calendar. Doing a second call for any comments. Hearing none. All those in favor of accepting the consent calendar, say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Okay, consent calendar is approved, 7-0. Next, we've got presentations and proclamations. The first one is for National Gun Violence Awareness Day, which is June 4th. And we will have Councilmember Odell reading that one.
Madam Mayor, could you do the other one first? I'm still trying to get to that point.
Absolutely, sorry. The other one we have is the LGBTQ Pride Month, and we will be having, that one's a near and dear for my family, so that one, we will be having Councilmember Stewart. Would you please read that one?
Just give me one second here. I'm, my apologies, just getting back here. And we love the slow internet some days. Here we go. Proclamation for lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer Pride Month, June 2021. Whereas our nation was founded upon the Declaration that all people are created equal, that life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness are among the inalienable rights of every person, and that each person, person shall be accorded the equal protection of the law. The LGBTQ community has made great strides forward, but equality, inclusion, and acceptance have not yet been fully achieved. We must practice these values and teach them to future generations. And whereas the city of Smamish is committed to fostering diversity and inclusion, and whereas on June 28th, 1969, patrons of the Stonewall Inn in New York City rose up and resisted harassment that had become all too common for members of the LGBTQ community. Out of this resistance, the LGBTQ rights movement in America was born. During LGBTQ Pride Month, we commemorate the events of June 1969 and commit to achieving equal justice under the law for LGBTQ Americans. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor, on behalf of the city of Smamish and the council due hereby proclaim June 2021 as lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer Pride Month. In the city of Smamish, and we encourage all residents to celebrate the progress within our culture towards justice, equality, and full civic recognition for LGBTQ persons, and to join us in the fights that remain to be won.
Thank you. The next one that we have will be for the National Gun Violence Awareness Day, which is June 4th, and that will be from Councilmember Odell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Smamish, Washington, June 4th, 2021. Proclamation, National Gun Violence Awareness Day. And as was said earlier, wear orange on that day, please. Whereas every day, more than 100 Americans are killed by gun violence alongside more than 230 who are shot and wounded, and on average, more than 13,000 gun homicides every year. And whereas Americans are 25 times more likely to die by gun homicide than people in other high-income countries. And whereas Washington has 781 gun deaths every year with a rate of 10.2 deaths per 100,000 people, Washington State has the 40th highest rate of gun deaths in the U.S. And whereas gun homicides and assaults are concentrated in cities, with more than half of all firearms-related gun deaths in the nation occurring in 127 cities. And whereas cities across the nation, including Smamish, are working to end this senseless violence with evidence-based solutions. And whereas protecting public safety in the communities served is mayor's highest responsibility. And whereas support for the Second Amendment rights of law-abiding citizens goes hand-in-hand with keeping guns away from people with dangerous histories. And whereas mayors and law enforcement officers know their communities best, are the most familiar with local criminal activity and how to address it, and are best positioned to understand how to keep the citizens safe. And whereas gun violence prevention is more important than ever as the COVID-19 pandemic continues to exacerbate, exacerbate gun violence after more than a year of increased gun sales, increased calls to suicide, and to domestic violence hotlines, and an increase in city gun violence. Whereas in January 2013, Hadiya Pendleton was tragically shot and killed at age 15. And on June 4th, 2021, to recognize the 24th birthday of Hadiya Pendleton, born June 2, 1997, people across the United States will recognize National Gun Violence Awareness Day and Wear Orange in tribute to, one, Hadiya Pendleton and other victims of gun violence, and, two, the loved ones of those victims. And whereas the idea was inspired by a group of Hadiya's friends, who asked their classmates to commemorate their life by wearing orange. They chose this color because hunters wear orange to announce themselves to other hunters when out in the woods, and orange is a color that symbolizes the value of human life. And whereas anyone could join this campaign by pledging to wear orange on June 4th, the first Friday in June of 2021, to help raise awareness about gun violence. And whereas by wearing orange on June 4th, 2021, Americans will raise awareness about gun violence and honor the lives of gun violence victims and survivors. And whereas we know our commitment to reduce gun violence and pledge to do all we can to keep firearms out of the wrong hands, and to encourage responsible gun ownership to keep our children safe. Therefore, now therefore be it resolved that Mayor Karen Moran, on behalf of the City Council, declares the first day in Friday, June 4th, 2021, to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day. We encourage all citizens to support the local community's effort to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence and to honor and vow human lives. And Madam Mayor, let me just say, it was my pleasure to read this as a veteran who is fully trained in the use of weapons of war, and I do not want to see them used in my community. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Okay, then next up for this evening is the, I guess we're all the way down to the American Rescue, the American Rescue Plan Act, and that will be, oh, Mike, that's you? All right, Mr. Sugg.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Council and Mr. City Manager. Mike Suggs, Senior Management Analyst here, to introduce this item. And this agenda item is to provide an update on the American Rescue Plan Act, otherwise known as ARPA. For background, you will recall that staff has provided Council with a couple of updates on ARPA since it was signed into law on March 11th. As we know, ARPA was a huge $1.9 trillion economic stimulus bill that included $350 billion for state, local, territorial, and tribal governments to help them respond to the COVID-19 emergency. Given the massive scale of this bill, the U.S. Treasury needed some time to develop the guidelines and determine funding allocations for the tens of thousands of agencies who are entitled to funding under ARPA. And just a few short weeks ago, the Treasury released those guidelines and allocations, which showed that Smamish will receive a little under $4.8 million from ARPA. And this number was a bit of a shock, given that we had been hearing from unofficial sources that the city would receive around, around $14.3 million. It turns out these unofficial estimates incorrectly classified Smamish and a number of other cities as, quote, "non-entitlement" units of government. However, when the Treasury developed their official allocations, they followed the definitions written in the Act, which actually placed these agencies in a different classification called metropolitan cities. The allocation formulas for these two classifications were different, which resulted in differing funding amounts we saw between the unofficial estimates and the official allocations. The Association of Washington Cities and the National League of Cities were both working with the Treasury to sort out the confusion around this issue, and they just recently got back to the affected cities to say that the Treasury allocations are final, and that they would recommend that those cities begin the process of requesting their funding. Once the funding is requested, the Treasury will send 50% of the allocation shortly after, with the second half coming about a year later. The Act requires that the funds be obligated by the end of 2024 and spent by the end of 2026. And the funds are intended to be forward-looking, so the furthest back they can be used is for expenses starting on March 3rd of this year. And one exception for this would be retrospective hazard pay, which can be calculated back to the start of the emergency. The agenda bill includes a discussion of the Treasury's 151-page guidance document, which describes how ARPA funds can be used. In general, the guidance allows for many of the same types of uses that were allowed under CARES, such as business and nonprofit grants, public safety expenditures dedicated to COVID, PPE and facility mitigations, food and rent assistance, mental health services, and things of that nature. But there are some interesting new uses allowed under ARPA. For example, it allows funding to be used for water, sewer, or broadband infrastructure. And it wasn't initially clear from the ARPA legislation whether stormwater would be part of that, but the National League of Cities was advocating pretty heavily for it, and it looks like that worked because the implementing rules do allow funds to be used to build stormwater and green infrastructure. Another interesting use is revenue loss replacement, which was actually specifically disallowed under CARES, is now allowed under ARPA. And funding can be used for this purpose, but it cannot go into reserves. It must be used to pay for general city services, such as infrastructure and maintenance. And finance is working on those calculations right now to see if we would have any eligible expenditures under the revenue loss category. I don't have any of the final numbers on hand, but it appears the city may potentially be eligible to claim roughly $400,000 in this category in 2020 if desired. And what's written in the agenda bill in tonight's packet and what I've described here does not represent the full scope of the potential uses, and I would encourage anyone interested to learn more, to read the fact sheet and the quick reference guide that's linked in the body of the agenda bill for a more thorough summary. And finally, I would like to point out that the budget amendment that's coming to Council on June 15th, as part of the budget carryforward process, will include funding for this anticipated first half of 2021 ARPA funds, and the other 50% of the ARPA funds will be included in the 2022 budget. So the, excuse me, so the recommended action tonight is for the Council to direct the city manager to apply for the city's American Rescue Plan Act funding allocation from the U.S. Treasury. And with that, I will go ahead and hand it back over to the mayor for any questions or discussion.
Okay, we've got a lineup of questions, so I think you better prepare yourself for a round robin here. Okay, and we are gonna start with Councilmember Gamblin.
Yeah, so I guess we should be discussing it, but I'm just gonna make a motion that the City Council direct the city manager to apply for the city's American Rescue Plan Act funding allocation from the U.S. Treasury.
Second motion.
Okay, now we're on to discussion. So Councilmember Gamblin, did you want to speak to your motion?
Yeah, I read the information that the staff provided. It's too bad that we're a little different position than we thought we were. Luckily, we kind of were planned for that eventuality, and I think it's time to get our paperwork in and get moving to pull the whatever benefit we can get from the Rescue Plan Act.
Excellent, thank you. Okay, we're going to go continue down for round robin, so we're going to go, I'm just going to go on my list here. So next would be Councilmember Odell.
Okay, thank you. I assume that staff will be preparing a list of recommendations for Council as for how to use this stuff?
That is affirmative, Councilman Odell and Council. We are working on that, and specifically, we would like to hear some general direction from the Council. There are a number of capital projects, there are a number of things that we can provide to the Council. We are also bringing back on the 15th the CARES Act funds and things like that, that we've got to go back and revisit where we had reserved money on our ILA with Issaquah that we may be able to get reimbursed through FEMA, but we should hold on to funds just in case there's an issue. And then we also received recommendations from, or requests from East Side Fire and Rescue for costs that were not covered by our CARES Act funds that they have incurred. And our unfunded EFOR COVID staffing supply expenses, our allocations are about $560,000. So there's those types of COVID-related expenses that we can divvy up between our CARES Act and then the ARPA funds, and we can provide some guidance on how we tackle that. But I would really like to hear from the Council, and perhaps that's after we provide you some guidance, or certainly before. But we're open so that we are in tune with what the Council body would like to see.
Well, thank you, Mr. Senior Manager. I don't think we're too shy about making our own thoughts known. The stormwater issue is one that caught my eye because I think we have a lot of things we could be looking at using the money for there. The other thing that caught my eye is revenue loss replacement, which is not something I don't think we've talked too much about, but I'd be interested in hearing perhaps from the Finance Director if there's anything there that may be on the list as well. And those are the two things that came to my mind right off the top. Thank you.
Okay, next on my list is Councilmember Ross.
Yeah, Mr. City Manager, you mentioned EFOR. Did I get, it looks like Councilmember Stewart may be in the queue before me, so I'll...
I'm just going down the list that I have.
Oh, okay, fair enough. So, Mr. City Manager, you mentioned EFOR had some supplies reimbursement that they didn't get in the previous funding allotments. And I think we talked a bit about the reconfiguring the firehouses. We've already started doing that with design in our budget, if I recall. Is there potential opportunities there that we can explore as well?
Well, I think there are, and we'll bring that forward. We'll have a discussion on the 8th, just next week, a study session talking about the MOC and the fire station. Costs have risen significantly, as you probably read in the paper, heard on the news, but we'll have those costs for you next week.
Excellent, thanks.
Okay, next on my list is Councilmember Stewart.
Great, thank you. A couple of questions. Can we get, and maybe this is coming on the 15th, I'm not sure, but really a detailed report on all of the CARES Act funding and the detailed expenses? We've gotten a lot of, you know, kind of rounded numbers and really understanding these details of all of these additional expenses for EFOR, because last we heard, there was still about $1 million, and we had discussions about potentially getting more of that money out into the community to help folks. And I think it's really important that we understand how much of that money we have. You've also talked about the potential reimbursement through FEMA. What's the timeline on that, on sending that in and finding out when we're going to get that money reimbursed?
We will attempt to have answers for all of that, but on FEMA, I'll check in with Andrew Stephens, our Emergency Manager, on what his estimate is so that I don't mistake that. But FEMA is often, lags significantly.
Have we submitted those expenses yet, or have, or no?
No, we haven't, because the vaccination operation is still ongoing, and we haven't received final numbers.
Okay, yeah, it would be really great to understand the timing on that. My biggest concern is that the rent and mortgage, or the eviction and foreclosure moratoria are likely to be lifted in the coming months. And so, again, really understanding how much assistance we need to get out into the community, that could have devastating effects across, not just in our neighborhoods, but across the region if we're not prepared for that. The other question I have is in regards to hazard pay. So how is the hazard pay working? Is that working on a per-city basis, based on where the person works? So for example, our grocery store workers or other people who've been out on the front lines, working in our restaurants, our healthcare facilities, all of the people who were designated as critical workers, are they potentially not getting hazard pay if we, as a city, don't pass some sort of hazard pay ordinance?
I don't know. We'll have to do some more research on that. You know, just hear stories anecdotally about a city passing something for the local folks, but I can't be a well-informed, I'm not a well-informed source on that particular issue right now. And we desire to understand more about what monies are coming from the state and from the counties out to help with this eviction. You know, the county executive had identified a significant program, but we need to understand that so that we're working in unison with the region. So there's a lot for us to learn.
Absolutely. And will that be coming on the 15th, did you say?
No, I didn't say that. We'll provide as much information as we can, but I'm just not sure how much we will garner regarding some of this other detailed information you've requested.
Okay, yeah, it would be really helpful to kind of get a better picture of that so we make, you know, I personally would like to see us make sure that the first priority is helping those who have been most affected, whether that be through food, or mortgage, or rental assistance, those types of things. Secondly, I'd like to make sure that all of those people who've been out there risking their lives to keep us fed and all of the essential services that we needed, that if we need to do something to help them get the pay that they need, that we do that. And then looking at some other ideas around potentially infrastructure and other jobs, or other potential places to spend money. And it's my understanding, last I saw in the reports, I don't know that we've experienced revenue loss due to COVID. At least, that's not what the financial report said, so it would also be interesting to get confirmation that that is still, in fact, the case.
We will have finance.
I think that's really helpful.
We'll have finance report on that. We've tried to look at that very closely, and Sammamish was not nearly as impacted as many other communities, but then our tax mix is different. But I'm told that there is a negative number according to how it is calculated, but I haven't seen it yet. Thank you.
Okay, great. And just to reiterate, will we be able to get that really detailed written report on all of the CARES spending before the 15th?
I'll see where staff is on that so that we can provide you as informed information so that you can begin to formulate ideas. But I don't anticipate that we will have the detailed information such that the Council may want additional meetings and additional information before you formulate what exactly you want to do in your plan.
Sure, but we should know what we've already spent, right? That shouldn't be hard to provide. Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, next I've got Councilmember Trine.
Maybe Mike or City Manager. The motion was for a request. I'm, is that also then applying? So is it the same thing, request, apply? You're applying for the funds.
Yes.
Right, so we're requesting you to apply for the funds, is what we're doing here?
Yes, the money will come in two tranches, and we'd be applying for the first tranche, which is essentially 50% of the allocated amount of money.
And then you asked us to mention what we'd like that money, or ideas. I'll send those to you in an email, and so that you'll have that from me as well. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
I'm just curious, based on the low list here, and I appreciate the kind of broad overview that's obviously not all-encompassing of where these funds can be spent, but I'm curious if other agencies, like a particular SAM plat has reached out to us, or we might anticipate them reaching out to us. I see sewer is one of the items there. We know that's a current infrastructure issue. And then I was also curious, it says green streets, and I don't know how that's defined, and was curious if any of our current projects, infrastructure-wise, meet those guidelines, whatever those might be.
I didn't catch the wording on the last part of that. I caught the SAM plat and the sewer issue. What was the...
It says, under the infrastructure tab on the agenda bill, it does talk, you know, it says green infrastructure such as rain gardens and green streets. I don't know what green streets are.
We'll bring more information for you on that, then. I can't intentionally respond either at the moment. SAM plat has reached out to me. They said that they were contacted. I know they had talked previously about their billing structure and assisting with those that were having difficulty paying bills. The Council may want to look at that. I sat on a municipal utility board when I was working down in Alameda, and usually those utilities, municipal utilities such as SAM plat and other utility folks, have formulas, and it's built into their rate structure. And I don't see that as a strong policy move by the part of the city, but maybe that's me in my experience on the board. As to infrastructure, there may be some needs there, but those should be scrutinized well between the board, and they might want to articulate more clearly what they're exactly looking for. But the money can be used for that.
Very good, thank you.
Okay, and then my comments on here are closer to what I saw in here, that we could use it for our firehouses, which I believe are even to do the firehouse that we were looking at. We're going to come in, even if we used all the money, we'd still come in behind.
The Council had budgeted about $2.5 million a few years ago. We've conducted a study. You'll get the details more next week, but the current cost with, based on current cost by the architect, looking at basic sustainability issues, building code, the upgrades that are required, the cost is coming in closer to $6 million. And the cost of the new fire station to total rebuild is somewhere estimated closer to $15 million.
Okay, so, okay, well, that takes care of what I was thinking for. There's not going to be a whole lot of money to look at, but it does include stormwater, which is good because we have a lot of issues with stormwater, and we had looked at something for town center, a possible design sort of thing there. And then we had also talked about looking at something, again, for the businesses. And I know I had talked to some of the businesses, the brick-and-mortar businesses that are down in the city, and, you know, if we were going to do anything, again, for the businesses, I'd like to look at, you know, how they've been affected and see what's happening with the brick-and-mortar folks, so. We've done a full round, and yes, I'm seeing your comment here about northeast Sammamish. Do we want to do another round? Or do we want to do a vote? What do we, it's the pleasure of the Council.
Can I just, I just wanted to share something Deputy Mayor Malchow asked about green streets, and I just wanted to let folks on the phone know, or those watching, that if they go out to the EPA, there's lots of information about green streets out there, and I sent an email to the Council for your review as well. So some pretty great ideas about how to improve the cleansing of the water through green streets, how to reduce stormwater flows, and things like that by building green streets. So, pretty cool stuff.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor. Can you please repeat your motion?
I don't have any funding on that. I'm instructed the City Council to direct the City Manager to apply for the city's American Rescue Plan Act funding allocation from the U.S. Treasury.
Okay, so we had, that was the motion. We had a second. We've had discussion. Any more discussion? Any last thoughts? You're hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Excellent. And that takes us to a 7-0 vote, which I always like. Okay, we do not have a second executive session. Council reports or City Manager reports? Dave, do you have a report for us this evening?
I don't right now, thank you.
Okay, any Councilmembers that have anything they wish to report this evening? Okay, Councilmember Trine.
Yeah, I just wanted to state that I believe in the previous executive session, when Councilmembers were excluded on a decision, that there was a decision was made and brought forth, I believe it's in violation, so any decision from that session should be void. I just want that to be on the public record. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other notes, comments?
I'm in the queue.
Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, I just want to remind Council, and I sent something over email, and this was a while ago, this is relative to the Kocany Work Group, that there is, their budget will be passed by the Kocany Work Group in June, and there is, I think, a small increase, and I did email that out to Council just to put it on your radar. I will try and dig up that email again, but please know that I am going to need a head nod from the Council, probably at the next Council meeting, so that I can vote for Sammamish.
Okay, everybody make sure you read for the information on the Kocany Work Group, and get a message to Deputy Mayor, one way or the other. Okay, hearing and seeing nothing else in the chat.
Motion to adjourn. I'll second that.
Okay. Motion to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? All right, everybody have a good week.